Good evening to each and every one of you all. Thank you for being here tonight. Staff, thank you. Commissioner, thank you. Madam Attorney, thank you as well. We'll start our workshop October the, October the seventh, twenty twenty, twenty five at six thirty P. M. Madam Clerk, recall the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
President.
Commissioner Pope.
President.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
President.
Mayor Collins.
President. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to the Commission. We'll continue with discussion on agenda item for tonight. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have any deletion, uh, addition to this agenda for tonight?
None, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, we have a roll call at seven o'clock. And the prayer and then pledge to lead to disclose the vote of conflict, presentation of proclamation. Madam Clerk, is there any presentation of proclamation tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, madam. Opportunity for the public to address the Commissioner at seven o'clock to consent to the agenda. Commissioner, do you have any questions or references to consent to the agenda at this present time?
None, sir.
All right. Thank you. We'll continue with our resolution. Resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, brief for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number four to agreement LP five zero one zero two between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the City of South Bay, providing for adoption of representations provided for an effective date.
But you, Madam Clerk, Senator Manu Campbell.
Mayor Commission, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, um, and the City of South Bay went into agreement back in February of twenty eighteen. The agreement was amended August twenty nineteen and further amended December twenty twenty and June twenty twenty-three. This project is centered around the waters flood control in the southeast section. There's approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars remaining in that grant. And this resolution will amend the agreement to put all the dollars in construction. And staff is recommending approval to remove a task, excuse me, request a budget reallocation for the project and remove a task from the grant work plan. This would cover and close out this agreement for the construction that took place in the southeast section. Staff will be recommending approval of said resolution.
Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Any question from this Commission's per resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You were saying that it's a balance of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Manager, you were saying that it's a balance of a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
There is a hundred, approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars remaining in the grant so that we can close out the project. We are requesting to reallocate within the grant the hundred, approximately a hundred forty thousand dollars to construction. So we are able, so the city could finalize the reimbursement.
Okay, so you're asking, um, the, the hundred and forty thousand to, um, be reda, uh, directed to construction? What type of construction are we, um, wanted to move this, um, to?
It is a stormwater. It's the same project. It is a stormwater project in the southeast section that has been completed. So it's not a new project.
You're saying it's completed and it's a balance of a hundred and four. I'm just trying to get some clarification. You say it's a, um, a balance of a hundred and forty that's left on the project that has been completed? And you asking, um, approval to move it to another project?
No, moving it within the grant. So in the grant, once we make applications, now I understand your question. Once we make application for the grant, we put estimate, we estimate the dollar amounts where to place them within a line item. Then the grant or the agreement is approved. In order for, if we don't move it, if we don't use it in either task one for, let's say this one, pre-construction activities, excuse me. The only way we're able to utilize those dollars is to make an amendment in the actual grant agreement. So what we are asking and what the state has agreed to is to move it from pre-construction to, um, task, construction task. So we are making a line item adjustment in the actual grant agreement in order to cover, because there are no pre, there's no more pre-construction activities taking place and those dollars were not utilized. However, there were construction activity where we're able to utilize those funds in the construction activities. And that's what we're asking to do to maximize the seven hundred thousand dollar grant.
Thank you. I, I, I understand it now. Thank you.
That's, that's clear, clear up, sir. Mr. King?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. In addition to questions for resolution fifty-five, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five from this Commission. Right here and on, we'll continue. Resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, brief for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute the project agreement for architectural and engineering consulting services between the City of South Bay and WGI Inc., providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senator Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, we received, the City of South Bay received two million dollars from the state of Florida for the Tanner Park project. In the utilization, in the scope of that project, as we began, um, evaluating the land and doing land assessment, there was environmental issues such as arsenic found on the site. We, there was a three thousand dollar expenditure authorized. There was a three thousand dollar expenditure done by WGI, um, to begin that process. All within that time period, some additional environmental work has come about that needs to be done. WGI is the architect, um, excuse me, engineer working on that project. And this, they are also the engineering and architecture and engineering procured through our CCNA process, um, of record to further the engineering work that needs to be done in order to utilize other parts of that two million dollars from the state. Staff is recommending, uh, we go into agreement for the approximate hundred thousand dollars of the, of, for this project to further all of the paperwork and documentation needed so that we're able to get to the construction phase of the two million dollars. So the state is, all of this is covered under that two million dollar grant. Staff is recommending approval to execute this project agreement with WGI. We were, we are not able to move forward with the Tanner Park project demolition, getting it to demolition and vertical construction until we buy, get through all of the environmental issues. That's what this agreement will do is move us forward with all of the environmental issues on that site. Staff will be recommending approval of resolution fifty-six, twenty twenty-five.
All right. Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Any question from this Commission's per resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Pope.
Uh, my only question is, um, after looking over the, uh, the, the, the resolution is, uh, how confident are we that, uh, the arsenic levels would be where we want them to be after this, uh, E. A. in the brown field?
We're extremely confident that the arsenic levels will not be there once this project is completed.
Appreciate it, sir.
In addition, question from this Commission's per resolution.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, question, um, you said WGI Inc., they are presently working on removing, um, the arsenic that's, that's up, that present now? Are they presently working on this project?
They are currently working on this project. They are not working on removing. They, they are working on documentation for the state in, once they get to the point of removal. So there's an entire environmental process that must be done and completed in order to get authorization to even move to the construction phase.
And WGI will be doing?
The documentation along with, um, the environmental services of WGI on, from their environmental engineers, working with the State Department of Environmental Protection engineers, um, and the department, Florida Department of Commerce, um, as the funding agency. We have weekly meetings, bi-weekly meetings with them, and, um, that is where this project is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Pope, and thank you, Commissioner King. We'll continue with our resolution tonight. Resolution five fifty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, brief for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute a carnival agreement between the City of South Bay and Carr Carnival LLC for the provision of carnival-related services, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senator Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, if you all remember, last year we had to have a special meeting, um, for the carnival to take place here in the City of South Bay. The manager has been in conversation with Mr. Carr Carnival for off and on during this time period, well in advance of the November schedule. So we are presenting the carnival agreement. The rec, staff will be recommending approval of this carnival agreement, same as last year, in order to move, very similar to the prior years, let me say that, similar to the prior years, recommending approval of the Carr Carnival Agreement. This agreement in the time period would give the all parties the ample amount of time for advertising, marketing, and getting the communities excited, um, for this carnival to take place in the City of South Bay. The carnival setup will begin November twenty-third and break down November thirtieth. This is, uh, the time requested by Mr. Carr, uh, the carnival director, owner. Um, so staff was recommending approval.
Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Any question from this Commission's per resolution fifty-seven, twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, um, in the agreement in section four, where it says, um, ticket, ticket sales, uh, revenue, the city will, um, gross what? Twenty percent of, twenty percent of the gross, uh, revenues. Is there, um, how would we know the total, total amount, um, profit that this carnival, um, will make and determine the twenty percent?
That is off of their ticket, sales sheets, um, and all the things that they are, their accounting records will be shared and, oh, shared with the city in order to make that calculation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner King. Senator Manager Campbell, any question? The reference of garbage service and the, I think it's the hydrogen water. I think that they would take care of that issue.
They are responsible for all of those expenses, um, including their water this year. They've always been responsible for their water and, um, only thing the city supported was the connection and getting it connected due to the timing. But we have, we've, we're executing this agreement in more than enough time so that they are able to work with the, um, the count, the carnival operator has enough time to work with the county in order to get the appropriate meter in order to move forward. They are also covering their security. They have their security, um, covered. They have, um, the garbage, all of the incidentals, and any other costs associated with this, um, carnival.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do appreciate that, sir. In addition to questions from this Commission per this resolution fifty-seven, twenty twenty-five, we'll continue. Ordinance, ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty-five. This is our first reading tonight. Commissioner, Madam Clerk, brief for the record, please.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, providing for the city's consent to the inclusion of the entire territory within the City of South Bay's municipal boundaries into Palm Beach County's Fire Rescue Municipal Service Taxing Unit for Fire Rescue, Fire Protection, Advanced Life Support, or similar emergency services, fire code enforcement, and other necessary incidental services. Providing for intent, purpose, and consent, providing for effectiveness and duration of consent, providing for effectiveness of repeal, acknowledging adverbal mileage rate limitation, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for captions, and providing for effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senator Manager Campbell.
Mayor Commission, ordinance number zero four twenty sixteen was adopted during that time period for, to extend the municipal services taxing unit for our Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Services through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The ordinance being presented to the Commission tonight will provide the said consent and inclusion. It shall be deemed to continue through seven thirty A. M. on October first, twenty twenty, twenty-sixth, to the extent necessary and enabled the county to provide within the city Fire Rescue and related services funded by Tax Year twenty twenty-five through, uh, December thirty-first, twenty thirty-five. Staff is recommending approval of said, staff will be recommending approval on first reading, ordinance number zero five, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Any question for this ordinance, uh, zero five, twenty twenty-five from this Commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes, um, upon the clarification, um, how did we come, uh, to the resolution of a ten-year extension of contract?
It is presented by Fire Rescue and all of the, um, agreements have been for ten years.
Okay. As a manager, our final budget, uh, the rollback, the rollback in administrative, what was that again, sir?
The approximate number for Fire Rescue for the City of South Bay is approximately three point four mileage and the city's, uh, taxing rate is six point two or somewhere six point three and some other numbers mileage, where our total mileage rate for the City of South Bay is approximately nine point, um, seven or nine point eight and some other numbers, um, where, for the City of South Bay's total mileage rate, including this MSTU.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do appreciate that, sir. In addition to question from this Commission's per resolution, ordinance zero five, twenty twenty-five?
Point of clarity.
Um, Commissioner Pope.
Yes, I just want for the, um, for the clarity to the audience, for, for residents to know that it's not a new tax that, that's being added, but it's an extension of, of the tax that we already pay to be up under the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, which we have been with them for two decades. So we just extended it. So it's nothing new.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Pope. Uh, Rosemont Letter, Mr. School report.
William.
It's hot towel here tonight.
Um, he said he might. But if not, then I'll get it.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you. Financial report.
At the, uh, regular.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk's report. Senator Manager's report.
Oh, I have one thing just to discuss the, uh, prior year, the incentive program that the Commission adopted in twenty twenty-four. And I, and I just want to remind the Commission that in your budget that you approved, um, last year, well, excuse me, last year it was asked for, in order, for the incentive program to have some fiscal support. And just wanted to let the Commission know and remind the Commission that in the budget approved for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, there were dollars within that budget for the, um, incentive program. So I wanted to just, um, let you all know that we were able to find the support as requested by the Commission in twenty twenty-four, um, for the incentive program to find dollars in order to support it. But you did adopt that in your fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, budget. So that is all from the manager.
All right. Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Any question from this Commission per Senator Manager's report?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Pope?
Yeah, just for, uh, clarity to the residents, uh, what is the incentive program to the city manager?
I will, uh, where is it or what is it?
The dollar.
No, no, what exactly is incentive?
I, I know the, I don't have it in front of me, but I do, I can bring it back. But this is the one where, uh, I know we talked about pride and hope. Um, there were hours set aside and the possibility of funding to support those, uh, for the employees should they meet a certain level on their annual evaluations. So that is the employee incentive program. But I, I could, um...
Thank you, uh, Senator Manager Campbell. Another thing, uh, residents, it's, it's a way of trying to keep the morale up in your, within your, uh, with your employers, within your city. And the reason I said that because I seen it during the time when I was working myself, was negotiating contracts during that particular time period. And I seen that by you having a incentive program and, and offering that to the employees there, you see the big change in those individuals, seeing that they was willing to come to work and want to, want to come to work. And then it wasn't a nought of this back and forth things, reference to the employees or towards their supervisors. They were willing to work because they know they're going to be rewarded for the work that they rendered in the workplace. And I think that this is a way to make sure that the employers know that we are pleased with the work they're doing. We appreciate the work they're doing in the workplace as well. And I think this will go a mighty long ways. And when the Commissioner thought about this in twenty twenty-four, I thought it was a great and a wonderful idea in reference to employers in the city here. And as this continue on, I think that you will see more and more of these employees really to want to work. And I think that morale would pick up more and more as well. So I think this was a great idea. And I think it was a wonderful thing that the Commission approved in reference to employers within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was, um, adopted on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. It was the Employee Recognition Program. Type of, type of awards include the Pride Award, which is public recognition involving dedicated employees, the Hero Award, the humanitarian efforts recognized by others. Uh, City Commission authorized the city manager to establish the recognition program to boost morale as outlined and shared with the mayor, my city staff, and provide an incentive for employee excellence. So that is, um, I ju, it was during the budget process, I spoke on it just a little and I went back through some of the prior meetings and I did not speak on it very, uh, I didn't clearly. So just, um, I wanted to highlight, not so much highlight, I wanted to make sure I was being clear with the Commission regarding the employee recognition program that was, um, set aside during the budget conversations.
Thank you, Senator Manager Campbell. Do appreciate that, sir.
That's all from the manager.
All right. Thank you, sir. Senator Turner's report.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Future agenda items. Uh, we, Commissioner coming for the good order and, uh, we are having a seven o'clock meeting. I entertain motion to adjourn. The move, move by Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Second.
So I come by Commissioner Pope. Workshop is adjourned. We'll reconvene in six minutes. Good evening. I want to, thank you all for being here tonight. To our staff members, to the residents of the city of South Bay, to our commissioner, to the Palm Beach County Fire Department and to Vice Mayor, uh, Waking Armison from the city, uh, Belgrade. Thank you all for being here and wanting to live feed. Thank you for joining us tonight. We start our meeting tonight at seven P M. We have a roll call, after roll call, we have a prayer, then have the pledge of allegiance to the flag. We have asked Pastor Bean to lead us in prayer tonight. Madam Clerk, crawl the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Present.
Commissioner Pope?
Present.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Present.
Mayor House?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk and thank you, Commissioner. Let us all stand, please.
Father God, we thank you. We thank you for this day of fellowship, our unity and love within the city of South Bay. We pray, God, that you continue to unite our city together as one. We pray that you look out for our mayor and our council members, God, as they govern us, your people, God, in the best of their ability, God. Let your will be done, God, as they serve, God, with dignity, God. We pray, God, that you be a hedge of protection around our city manager and his staff, God, that no weapon formed against them shall prosper. And you will continue, God, to make a way out of no way for this great city. It is in Jesus' name we pray and ask all these things and we say.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Bean, for that wonderful prayer. We appreciate that each and every meeting that we have here, you are present, sir, and we will not start a meeting in this chamber without a word from God. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Bryant for being here tonight from Senator Berman Office as well, who will always be at each one of our meetings. We really do appreciate that. Tonight, dispose of voting conflict, Commissioner King.
None, sir.
Thank you, madam. Commissioner Pope?
None, sir.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor McKelvin?
None, sir.
Thank you, sir, and none for me either. We'll continue with our Jennifer Knight presentation and proclamation, Madam Clerk. Do you have any tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Opportunity for the public to address the commissioner, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Sandofer?
Sandofer, you come forward, give your name and your address, sir, and thank you.
Good night. George Sandofer, two twenty-five Southwest ten, about you, South Bay, Florida, three three four nine three.
Yes, sir.
I know that we got a new garbage collection in town and it takes a while to get it going. But what we doing about the recycling bin? The turn the recycling bins, they're putting down. What are we going to do about the recycling bin? Where we going to put the recycle, um, truck?
Okay. Senator Manager Cameron?
I will look and get that answer regarding the, I mean, the recycled bins.
Mr. Manager, I believe it's supposed to be on Thursday, Wednesday or Wednesday or Thursday? I'm saying they, they supposed to deliver the bins, the recycled bins, I think, either Wednesday or Thursday.
Yes, Thursday, but why you, we gonna put them between now and Thursday? For me?
Yeah, I feel, I understand.
Thank you. Uh, my second question, and this for the commissioners and behalf of the public, I believe we should.
Address, address it to me, sir.
I believe we should go back with the seasonal comment at the end of the meetings because a lot of citizens got comments after the meeting is over. But they can't say anything because you have to wait two more weeks to address their concern. And by that time, they got something new come up. And this was changed due to the last administration of all the fever that was getting. I strongly believe, I know a lot of the citizens should believe also that we need to go back to the having the comments on the last of the ending meeting. It been that after over forty plus years when the city first was founded.
But, uh, Mr. Sandofer, in reference to that, I, I don't know when that was because I came in 2002 and this is the way it was during that particular time period. Now, maybe talking about another time that I wasn't aware of, sir. But my thing about it is that I think that the individuals who have been present at our meeting here, they had had the golden opportunity to address whatever item they have to on their agenda or not on the agenda. We haven't faced no problem in reference to that, and I don't think not one of these commissioners have gotten a comment in reference to that. This is the first time that they have been brought before this commission tonight and roughly should go back instead of continuing to move forward in reference to a resident's comment.
Mr. Mayor, when you first got into as commissioner, citizen, citizens' comment was always on the end of the commission meeting. Now, I know that I can't move it like you did. So I know when it was changed. And if you ask, if you ask Vice Mayor, he can tell you when it was changed. And the reason it was changed because the last administration, because what was going on then after the meeting, the house is then committed with so much at the commissioners that they changed that from the end of the meeting to the beginning of the meeting. So we will have this feedback.
Well, we, I, I don't, we haven't got no feedback in reference to the way we've been going in reference to allow the public to address, bring their comment before we continue with our agenda. And no one, no one had brought that before this commissioner. This is the first time I'm hearing about it that you're saying that we should move back instead of continuing to go forward. Because we have moved from the time that the individual come up to seven thirty to submit their comment card. And that each and every one of them have came in and they had the opportunity to submit their comment card. No one rejected to, we never ejected to no one submitting their comment card. We've been able to allow them to present their comment card between that time. And that was a possibility. We have some leverage at time as well. If someone have come in a little later and have the opportunity to present their comment card. We never said we're not going to accept their comment card. We still accept their comment card to work with the residents and allow them to have, to how they say so. And we have the right to listen to what they have to say so as well. We're not going to disrespect no one in reference to that, sir.
I agree what you're saying, but what I'm saying is this, if I want to speak on the agenda item, how can I speak on it after the meeting is over? I can't speak on what you ensure as yet. I have to wait to you or to the staff or the commissioners, may or their recommendation to make a comment. But if it's all, if the comment is at the beginning of the meeting, I cannot make a comment on the end of meeting because it's already passed um, um, public comment section. It's all what I'm trying to say. If I want to make a comment on anything that they said or done during the meeting, I can't make it after the end of the meeting because it's not citizens' comment, it's not public comments then. Public, public comment is at the beginning of the meeting. So I cannot, I have to wait the next commission meeting to bring something that happen at this commission meeting. And by that time, I got something else to talk about.
Okay. I think that according to the information I have here, I see any citizen other order wishing to approve before the city commission to speak with reference to any agenda, agenda item must complete their request for appearance and comment card and presented, present it completely form to the city commissioner. So if there's an agenda item that you want to speak on, you have the right to address it at that particular time period.
I agree, but I want to, I might want to speak on the commissioners' comment or commissioners' findings or the commis, whatever. When the, that the commission said or done or do that, I'm not fit comfortably with it. I should have my right to voice my opinion after the meeting, not before the meeting. Because at the beginning of meeting, I can, I don't know what you're going to say.
George, I, I think that, oh, excuse me, Mr. Sandofer, I think that, no, no, I think that you know that when the commissioners start speaking on different thing, they're speaking directly of all the agenda items. That's what they're speaking on. On all agenda items. And what I just read to you is there was a problem of something that you would like to speak with on reference to any agenda item. You have the right to speak on that particular item. What you're telling me now, you're saying an agenda item come up, the commissioner speak on it, you want to go after that commissioner about what that commissioner said in reference to that agenda item, I'm correct?
No, I want to ask a question. Okay, let's say the, 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 um, the hundred and forty thousand dollars. Okay, you all work on that, then at the end of the, at the end of, I want to ask a question on that. I can ask it because after commission come, I said after public comment. I may want to ask about what, what the value will be very, 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 very careful. But if the season comment is over, then I cannot speak on it because it's not, um, it's not in the order.
I think one of the greatest thing about it, we have a workshop at six thirty. We go over this agenda at that particular time period and we discuss those particular agenda items. Now, if you have a question, just you, you gave an example just a few minutes ago, a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. You know, I know you threw that out there, but it was discussed at the workshop. It was discussed and you did, the commissioner, commissioner had, she just, she asked one question in reference to that, that particular item you just spoke about.
But I didn't want to do about what I'm saying. I just said that for reference. But I might not be able to come to the workshop. He might not be able to come to the workshop. She might not be able to come to the workshop. And if you come at seven o'clock, we want to speak on, after the meeting, we want to have a dialogue on whatever was said.
No, George, we're not going to allow that, George, to have a dialogue. How long we're being, we'll be here all night to my dialogue and George, we not finna allow that to happen. I'm being straight up and being straight inferring what you in reference to this here. I, like I said, that we're not finna, what, whatever the commissioner says upon this and when an item come up before this commissioner here, I'm not finna go and you just start blabbing out, talking about what Commissioner King or what Bishop Pope or what Vice Mayor said. I'm not going to allow that to take place because that would be to disrupt the meeting, sir. It would disrupt the meeting. And that's why I said that if you, if you have a comment on any agenda item, as I read here, put it on the, put it on the card then talk about that agenda, that agenda item, sir. That's, they giving you your opportunity to talk about any agenda item that you prefer to talk about. Not wait, not saying I'm going to wait until see what Commissioner King said, Commissioner Pope said, or Vice Mayor McKelvin. No, we're not going to have that, sir. That's why we giving you the opportunity. You speak before any, any of these agenda is, is brought before these residents here. You have a right to speak on any one of them before brought before this commission.
I do understand that, but I still am saying, even if you.
Three minutes open.
Even if you made your comment, I still have my right to voice my opinion, whether I agree or not on, 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 on the agenda item or nothing.
Well, George, I already expressed to you, George, in reference, I, I allowed you to speak of more than your three minutes, but the thing about it, we would, you know, we have been working fine with this situation. We give you the opportunity to speak. That's why we asked as any comment from the residents or anyone that want to speak during that particular time period. But for me, just waiting until the commissioner asks a question to the manager about one of these agenda here and then waiting for, waiting for you to comment on that? No, we're not going to allow that, sir. I'm being open and honest with you. I'm not going to allow that, sir. Not going to do that at all. That's why I'm giving you the opportunity to speak.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Fuse?
Ms. Fuse?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor and Commissioners and Colonel. My name is Bernadice Fuse. I reside at one ninety-five Northwest Seventh, Seventh Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
South Bay, Florida. Um, I have two concerns. I have one y'all I had mentioned last year. You know, the back of my house, it called that. I call it the back alley.
The easement.
Oh, y'all call it easement.
Yes, ma'am.
It's grass don't start by growing up again. So who is responsible for that again?
Well, most of our public works department, they usually take care of that, that situation there in reference to the easements within the city of South Bay. So they are the one that usually take care of that. And, and you said it behind your house and behind your house, amen.
It's a fence.
And they can't go, they can't get in there?
Yeah, it's an alley because the, uh, L P and L truck tried to go through there to do, do the wire that I called out because of trees. And they, so far, but you see.
Okay. So, man, you look, will you look into that, Mr. Manager?
I, I can say, I can look into it, Mr. Mayor. A lot of those things we're able to address. Uh, give us a call here at City Hall during the, uh, during the work hours. We are able to address them. However, I'm able to share with Ms. Fuse, as I've stated in the past, that there is no easement in the rear of your, um, house. You are, your property abuts the adjacent property. So there is no alleyway, there is no easement, um, between those two properties. It is a, your property line to property line in that area. But, um, it is for, property maintenance is to be done by each of the property owners that abut one another. So, um, but we can look into it. You brought it to my attention and we'll look into it, um, again and seeing what could be done and give you a remedy in order to keep it maintained going forward.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, my second one, I have two pages. My second, my second three minutes deals. The, the new garbage can, people, I had my garbage can out there, they didn't pick it up. I know it's, it's going to take time. Uh, my neighbor and I tried to tell the guys when they came on the side of the street, they'll pick up the garbage on that side, but they won't. You know, on Lowerston side. Then they come down the road. I say, y'all missed my side. Y'all, me and Dale alone in it. So I'm going to sit out there for a whole week, you know? So if there's, I'm trying to understand the garbage thing. Do they pick up, uh, certain, uh, the south side from the west side? Or certain, they didn't come back for a whole week. She called the sanitation people over there and, you know, complained about it and she told them about it, but they said it had nothing to do with it. But she also said something about the dump, but that's another, that's another issue. Also now, when I left it out there, I just left it out there. So they came back the following week and they picked it up. Then it's a blue can. They didn't, and then here's, the green can still sitting out there. So I brought my green can in. Do they supposed to pick up the green can?
Yes, bring it outside.
Oh, bring it back out.
Yes, they will, they will pick the green can up. They definitely would do that. All right. Thank you, Ms. Fuse. Appreciate it, dear. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Crawford?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Virginia Crawford, two hundred Northwest Third Avenue. I just got a question about the agenda item, Tanner Park.
Yes, ma'am.
About the arson, uh, is y'all moving Tanner Park or where is the arson? Or arsenic?
Arsenic.
That you said that they got to clean up because the park is open and everybody is up there and arsenic on the land?
I, I can, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
The majority of the grounds here in the city of South Bay are contaminated with some levels of arsenic. Not unsafe levels of arsenic. But if you're utilizing, uh, federal funds and or state funds to do any development, any levels of arsenic must be removed from the area. So that's just one of the environmental, um, rules that we must abide by. So Tanner Park isn't moving. It is not unsafe levels of arsenic in the area. It is just a terminology that is used because if it's only a point percentage of arsenic in the ground, then there is arsenic in the ground. So just from the mere fact of agricultural, the farming and just the fertilizers and anything utilized in the area, there is some levels of arsenic that's in the, that's found in the area. But it must be cleaned prior to any development taking place utilizing federal funds and or state funds in order to move forward. So that is.
That's all I was concerned about when you said it was arsenic in the ground.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Annie?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner and residents of South Bay. Annie Ifo with Healthier Glaze. I just wanted to, um, come and give you some updates. October is a very busy month and I just want to make sure that the city of South Bay and the residents knew of things that are happening. Actually, this weekend, October the eleventh, as part of the Greater South Florida Baptist Women's Conference, there will be a community health fair, um, from ten to two. There is a mammogram bus that will be there. Uh, if you're in need of a mammogram, you can come out. You do have to register first. So what I'll do, I can give the clerk the, the link. You can also go to our page and I can share the link for the, and when I say our page, the Healthier Glaze page. And then you can, um, get the link to register to get your mammogram. It's free. There's no cost. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. October is Train the Brain. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There's a lot, uh, infant loss. It's a lot of campaigns going on. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware, one, that health fair. Um, number two, I'm glad to see folks either wearing a ribbon or wearing pink as we talk about Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I am working closely with Ms. Tasha Mervin, former commissioner for the city of Pahokee and a group of residents throughout the glaze. I am working closely with Ms. Tasha Mervin, former Commissioner for the City of Pahokee and a group of residents throughout the Glades. They're doing a pink walk, the Glades Pink Walk. Last year, uh we held it in Pahokee, both Belglade and South Bay supported this effort by um uh sponsoring the lunch. And so we're doing that again, the brunch, we're doing it again this year. Uh, we've already got our commitment from um Belglade. Um, I know Ms. Mervin talked to the city manager in regards to that as well. Uh, Pahokee is providing us the space at no cost. So uh right now, that's gonna be, the the walk is October eighteenth from eight AM to twelve PM. Right on the uh football field, and it's gonna be followed by a brunch, thanking our uh participants, our uh vendors and and that. So that's October eighteenth. Empire Healthcare on October seventeenth is doing a tea and conversation from twelve to two. It's gonna be at uh Pahokee, uh over there by Pohke Parks and Rec, but it's gonna be in the cafeteria um where Everglades Prep. And that'll be from twelve to two. Um, and it's gonna be addressing issues around women's health. Uh, let's see, anything, oh, and I'm working with King Ki- um Kendra with your Parks and Rec. We're doing arts on the muck um as a way of kicking off uh Muck Bowl. I know Muck Bowl is Halloween, but we wanted to do something to engage our seniors. And so I have sent information to King um Kendra. He's gonna bring um thirty-five of the seniors to come. It's gonna be at the Lois Lois Mary O'Evans Center, and that's gonna be from eleven to two. What we're doing is is trying to engage with our res- our residents, but also talk about the connection between the arts and brain health. Because we're starting to see an increase of folks being diagnosed with early onset dementia. And and we're seeing folks as young as in their fifties are being diagnosed with dementia. So I just wanna just bring those ac- I um activities to your attention. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me directly um through our uh Facebook, Instagram page. Uh, my phone number is five six one six eight five four eight two nine. Uh, I get a lot of spam on that, on that phone, that's my work phone. So if you text me, I promise you I will respond back.
Ms. Annie, Ms. uh Ms. Annie.
Yes.
The last activity of what I said, seniors, what date is that?
That's August, oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying August, Lord, October twenty-second. Sorry. Yeah, so everything is in October, guys, all the activities that I stated is in October.
Is that that is, that's not conjunction, in conjunction with that event they have out to the senior citizen place for Palm Beach County?
No, it's two different.
Two different things, okay, alright.
I think the ones that, the the one that's at West Area, that's the next day on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Cause we was trying to invite everyone, including West Area, and they said they couldn't do it because they had another event that they had already planned. So we're inviting South Bay, um the the lowest, the folks that go to the Lois Lois Center and folks from um Pahokee. So we're trying, and um Silver Tree and Quiet Waters, we're inviting them as well to come out.
Okay, alright, great, great.
What about seniors that that are?
That are not affiliated, they they're more than welcome to come.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you have some seniors, cause um I'm gonna be at the Pahokee Commission Meeting, I think that's next week, and I'm gonna be trying to do that as well. But it doesn't matter, you don't have to be affiliated with those groups to to come, anybody can come.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, have a good evening.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate you wanting to coming up tonight and and your response as well. Uh, we'll continue with our agenda for tonight, uh concern agenda. Commission meeting in September sixteen twenty twenty-five and September seventeen twenty twenty-five. Uh, then approval of city commission meeting and agenda October the seventh of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Manager, do you have additional addition to this agenda?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. May I have a motion and second to move the concern agenda to the floor for discussion or approval? So move. Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk. An additional question from this com- commissioner for the concern agenda. Here now, Madam Clerk, you call the role, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, thank you, commission passed by all commissioners, will continue. Resolution uh fifty-five dash twenty twenty-five, Madam Clerk, refer the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number four to agreement LP five zero one zero two between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the City of South Bay, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, may I have a motion and second to move resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-five to the floor for discussion and approval? Move. Move by Commissioner Polk?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKelvin, any questions for this resolution from this commissioner? Here now, Madam Clerk, refer the rec- uh call the role, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mc- McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, commission passed by all commissioners. Resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty-five, Madam Clerk, refer the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute the project agreement for architectural and engineering consulting services between the City of South Bay and WGI Inc., providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, may I have a motion and second to move resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty-five to the floor for discussion and approval? So move. Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk. In addition, question from this commissioner for resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty-five. Here now, Madam Clerk, you call the role, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thanks, commission passed by all commissioners. Resolution fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, Madam Clerk, refer the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of this, of, I'm sorry. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute a carnival agreement between the City of South Bay and Carr Carnival LLC for the provision of carnival related services, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, may I have a motion and second to move resolution fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-five to the floor for discussion and approval? Move. Move by Commissioner Polk?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKelvin, any additional question from this commissioner for res- resolution fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-five? Here now, Madam Clerk, you call the role, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thanks, commission passed by all commissioners. Ordinance, this ordinance tonight and resolution, an ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty-five is on our first reading tonight. Madam Clerk, refer the record, please.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, providing for the city's consent to the inclusion of the entire territory within the city of South Bay's municipal boundaries into Palm Beach County's Fire Rescue Municipal Service Taxing Unit for fire rescue, fire protection, advanced life support, or similar emerg- emergency services. Fire code enforcement and other necessary and incidental services, providing for intent, purpose and consent, providing for effectiveness in duration of consent, providing for effectiveness of repeal, acknowledging ad ver lum mileage rate limitation. Providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for captions, and providing for eff- an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, City Manager Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, as explained in the workshop and to further explain, the city commission hereby desires to extend for an additional ten-year period from December thirty-first twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first twenty thirty-five. It's consent to the inclusion of all the territory lying within the municipal boundaries of the city into the county's fire rescue MSTU for county fire rescue and related services within the city from from October one twenty-two, twenty twenty-six until seven thirty AM on October one twenty thirty-six. And believes that to such inclusion is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of South Bay. You have with you tonight Mayor, Commission, and Public, the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Fire Chief for Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Services, Mr. Patrick Kennedy, who also had an opportunity while he's coming to the mic. If there are any specific questions you all have. Um, he also was the district chief for a period of time here in the city of South Bay. But staff will be recommending on first reading approval of said ordinance. But any specific questions that the commission and our general public would have regarding the ordinance. Um, Chief Kennedy is here along with myself to answer those questions, Mayor.
Chief, if you come forward, please, sir, thank you. If you wanna bring your staff with you, bring them with you as well, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Manager, Camel. It's great to see you, I think we saw each other at seven thirty on the other side of the coast this morning.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say a few words, but if there's any questions that you have for me, I certainly would like to answer.
Sir, as far as, I think that uh at our workshop, the question that was asked by this commission is here, sir, I think they they do understand everything, but we just wanna hear from you before we move it back to the public, sir, at this present time, sir.
Sure, so on behalf of the men and women that serve Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, um nearly eighteen hundred personnel. Uh, I wanna say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. As I've mentioned, I was a battalion chief and a district chief out here, and um even though it was about an hour and twenty-minute drive every day, I just felt that warmth in my heart as I hit twenty-mile bend coming out here. And I got to revisit that again tonight as I got to come out here. Um, and I and I must say that, you know, forty-one years ago, Herman Bryce put ten districts together. And what happened here in the Glades with the three cities coming together into the county is much is very similar to what happened in nineteen eighty-four when ten districts came together and formed Palm Beach County. When it formed Palm Beach County, that was a very complex mission to take different personalities, different radio systems, and say it didn't matter whether you were in Belglade or Pahokee, or you were in Lake Worth Beach or West Boca or Jupiter. You were gonna get the men and women that had the training and the service to be able to deliver to whatever citizen they were running on. And that continues today. So he had a simple, a simple vision, that vision was to have community support, to have a place where people wanted to work. And it also was just to make sure that we had a good fire department. Today, I will challenge anybody to say this is an excellent fire department. And I will say that we had that support, and I felt that from the day that I served out here. And I thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve you in the twenty thirty-six, that's a long ways away, by the way.
Thank you, Chief, I really do appreciate you. Uh, Commission, do you have any, anything you wanna say to the chief?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner.
Yeah, again, I just wanna thank you all for the service that you guys provide, because I can recall when you first took over in two thousand five. I graduated in two thousand five. So I remember, quite frankly, and you guys have been the backbone of our public safety. And I got the privilege of riding in one of your trucks recently, so I appreciate you, what you guys do. And I just say to the residents and to my colleagues, you know, it it it, to me, it's not even about, you know, like I said earlier, we're not instituting a new service, but we're extending the proven service, and we appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to just um thank you guys for all that y'all do for the um the community here in the Glades and Palm Beach County as a whole. So um my continuing prayers are with you guys each and every time that you're out, you out of out servicing the community. Again, thank you for everything that you do.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner King, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you for your continuing service, um and I look forward to continue to work with you for the many years to come. Thank you for everything that you have done for the Glades area and the Palm Beach County as a whole, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Chief, thank you. Chief Gerald, thank you. Captain, thank you. I appreciate everything that you all have did within the city of South Bay, the service you run to not only the city of South Bay, but the entire Glades area here. When you first came out in this particular area, the city of South Bay, the bond that we established together, you know, by doing, by by you doing the work and your team doing the work within the city of South Bay. I seen the thing that's the work that you rendered to our residents in the city of South Bay. Whether come to our business or come to our residence within the city of South Bay, you always was there, your team was always there. Regardless of what time of the night, you was always there, and we really do appreciate it. On behalf of this commission, us and our city staff, along with our city manager, and its tower resident, all our residents in the city of South Bay. Thank you for the wonderful work y'all do each and every day. Our colleagues, we see what you do, we know what you do. Because due to the fact that you never, you know, slid away from us when we out there standing on the side there, we're waiting just to hear what you have to say in reference of what transpired or what happened. Even when the gas line had the gas line leak at Valero's, you know, it was out there. But seeing how you guys were working during that particular time period. You know, when I'm seeing gas and all of that just coming up out the line there, you know, I was a good ways back there, because I didn't wanna be exposed to none of that. But the thing about the work that I seen you guys do, thank you all. And and thank you, Chief, for just having a wonderful uh chief that you have brought out to this city here. The ones that you know that grew up in this particular area here. The ones that know this area very well. You brought these, told these individuals to come to the South Bay area here. And when they came here, they were very professional about their job, they were very polite with the residents in the city of South Bay. And they showed the residents that they care about them, they care for them, they care for their health as well, sir. And one of the greatest thing about, I can say about your your department, they always show love, not only to me, but to the residents as well. And I just wanna say thank you, we do appreciate you. And as Commissioner King said, may God continue to bless and cover y'all and make sure y'all be safe each and every day. Because I always said to the Palm Beach County Shaft Department, when you leave your home in the morning time, you say goodbye, hi, baby, I see you later. But you don't know whether you're gonna go back in the afternoon. And that's why I cherish you guys so much. Because when you leave from your home, you don't know whether you're gonna make it back, cause we have seen things that happen with the with the Shaft Department, with the Fire Department as well. And we we take our hats off to y'all, kudos go to each and every one of y'all that work for the Palm Beach County Shaft Department, thank you, sir.
It's our pleasure, sir, and our honor, thank you so much. And as you mentioned, um Chief Jerry was out here as a captain in that two thousand five era. And um she's proudly served and come back as a district chief, and I don't think she'll ever go anywhere else, she's gonna go kick my screen, so I wanna say thank you.
Thank you, we do appreciate you, thank you. Thank you. We will continue, we will continue with our ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty-five. At this present time is open to the public, and the public have any questions in reference to ordinance zero five twenty twenty-five on the first reading. Any questions for this ordinance? Here now, close on the public, return back to the commissioners. Commissioner, have any question in reference to ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty-five at this present time? Here now, may I have a motion and second to move ordinance number zero five twenty twenty-five on the first reading to the floor for discussion and approval? Move. Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk, any discussion in references to ordinance zero five twenty twenty-five on the first reading from this commissioner? Here now, Madam Clerk, you call the role, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Chief. And uh thank you to the audience as well, it passes by all commission on the first reading. Rosewood Elementary School report, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I don't see Mr. Hightower in the audience tonight, so he will be at our next commission meeting. Um, but we have curriculum night as well of, as well as our SAC meeting tomorrow at five thirty. Uh, dinner will be served to the the parents as well as the kids. Also, we'll be raffling off, I believe, between three to four bicycles. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends to come out to our curriculum night, as well as the SAC meeting tomorrow, starting at five thirty, at Rosewood Elementary School. That's Rosewood Elementary School report.
Alright, thank you, Vice Mayor, do appreciate that report, financial report.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to move that we would pass the financial report, I just wanted to make a few comments also. Um, just so the residents know, I think I mentioned that uh I've been serving in this role as the treasurer for about five.
Thank you, sir.
About a month now. And um I have the um purchasing policy procedures, which I've spent a lot of time in, just reading up on the policy and purchasing procedures and um unlike when I was just commissioner, um I would just go through the finance report, but I print them all out now. I print them out, and I go one by one, and I made my own chart. And uh you guys can see, this is not the same what we receive, but I made my own chart and I lined it up with what is uh being presented by the finance director. And so far, everything is in alignment with our purchasing and uh policy and procedures, and everything lines up, so pretty proud of that. And uh I move that we would pass the uh financial report um for the one for October the second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Polk, a second by Vice Mayor McKelvin, any question for the financial report from this commission?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was um looking at the financial report.
Commissioner King.
Sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, on the, I have some questions about some, need some clarification, the Bank America, um item, I guess, itemized transactions. Do you have that?
I do. Page seven, eight.
Mr. Master, you wanna come to the mic, sir?
I got it.
You got it.
Yeah, go ahead. What's the question?
I was waiting on Commissioner Polk to pull it up.
You go ahead, what's your question?
I'll go here, okay. Um, on the. Um, on the Bank America itemized, the purchase, um, just, um, some clarification on some, um, charges on eight seventeen, where it says, um, serious communication or... And it was like twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents on serious radio. Is that a, uh, uh, city item?
City item?
Yes.
That's a city item?
Yes.
Serious radio?
Yes.
Is that for a vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, now, you said city, um, okay, and... The All-Star, All-Star LLC on eight twenty-eight?
Yes.
That's a city item, okay. And the, I guess that's the Square MVP Management for a hundred and eighty dollars.
Square MVP?
It wa, well, I'm assuming it was square, it's SQ MVP Management. And that was, um, on the twenty-second of August?
Yes.
So you're, you're seeing all three of these items was, um, city-related?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that, I got another one, um... Check number one-seven-one-nine-two? Do you have that?
Hang on a second.
Who's check made out to?
Andre L. Hamilton?
Yes. God's sons, um, yes, the question?
Is this, uh, uh, is he the contractor with the city? Or this, uh, this, uh, work was, uh, individually, um, paid?
I'm, I'm unclear of the question, however...
The question, is, is this a contract work that was paid? Contract work that was done by the city that, was it paid, was it...
Correct. It's a, uh, main lawn maintenance and code compliance there in the alleyways. So we, that, uh, God's son clear and clean alleyways here in this city.
Yeah, my, yeah, my question is, I saw the invoice, and it's, uh, it has a person name and not a company name. And the check is made out to an individual and not a company. That's what my question, was it a contract? Because I see an individual name on the check and not a company.
Okay.
So my question is, is it contracted to Andre Hamilton? Or is it contracted to God's son's total property?
There's the name right there, so it is how they do their business, um, and how the checks are made out.
Okay.
But it is God's sons.
The invoice actually tells, it tells us the instructions on how they do business at the bottom of the invoice.
Correct.
Okay, okay, and, um, now, is that, is that ethical through the city? That we're, um, conducting, uh, business and paying an individual for a contract? A contract, um, work that's being done by the individual, that's being paid, uh, individual?
Ethical through the city? I, I'm unable to speak to ethics, uh, relative to the question, but it is, we are operating within our procurement policy and our purchasing policy here in the City of South Bay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner King, thank you, City Manager Campbell. Any additional questions for the finance report? Here, non, Madam Clerk, recall the role, please. Call the role, please.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Commissioned, passed three to one. We continue with our, uh, agenda for tonight. City Clerk's report? City Clerk's report?
None, sir.
City Attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Future agenda items. Here, non? Commissioner coming for the good of the order. Commissioner King?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say thank, thank you to everyone that came out, and, um, continue to come out, and, um, let's stay concerned about our city and how it's being run. And again, thank you again for coming out. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Polk?
Yes, uh, again, thank you all for coming out, and that, we just appreciate the city, appreciate the residents. It's our city, so we have to do what we have to do to make sure that, um, everything is done properly in the city. And I'm just proud to know that, at, what, being a resident, I, I sat out there in that audience, and I saw a lot of things, and, but being up here on the dais and having access to more information, I've learned that, hey, it's totally different. And you get to learn more of the back ends of it. And, uh, what I'm doing is spending a lot of time educating myself, because the Bible say we perish for the lack of knowledge. But not only do we perish, but, you know, sometimes we cause the people around us to perish for the lack of knowledge. And so what I'm doing is I'm educating myself, and, and it takes time, so, and I, and I think we're doing... I, I'm so confident in saying that we're doing a great job. And I'm telling you, I sat on that side over there. Let's, Campbell will tell you, I, I, I can always agree with, still don't agree with him. I, I don't agree with everything what my colleagues say up here. We're not here to agree with each other. We're here to look for the best interest for the residents and the stakeholders of the City of South Bay. But what I'm saying tonight is, I have a different perspective. That's what I'm saying to you all. And it comes with a different perspective when you get new information. And so, but I'm taking the time to educate myself and learn the new information. And that's where my perspective changes, not that, and nothing else that changes, so, okay, I see. That's it. Good night, y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes, I echo all the sentiments of Commissioner Polk. Thank you all for coming out, um, continue to come out and be a part of your local government. Um, also, congratulations to Mr., uh, Mr. Manager for receiving the PBCC ML Award. Continue the hard work, um, especially representing the City of South Bay. I say thank you, sir, for all your service and your dedication, and we, let's continue to move forward.
Yes, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you. I, I did owe Commissioner San as well, in reference of where we trying to run.
Before the mayor closes, uh, his, do his closing remarks, the question that came, uh, I want to clear the, I, I just got some more understanding regarding... I don't want anyone to walk out the door real quick. I don't want anyone to walk out the door that I am misleading you in any shape, form, or fashion. Therefore, I need to clear something up regarding the question asked about the square. The square, I'm under the impression, square management had to do with our credit card system, our ongoing credit card system, and that is not the case. I will bring back more information regarding the question on the square that I am getting here. I know it has something to do with, uh, Commissioner Berry's service at the time. I just need to get further information, um, not to prolong the meeting, but it is not the, I'm saying it's city-related. Yes, it was city-related, however, has something to do with Commissioner Berry, uh, services at that moment, and some transactions that needed to be cleared and taken care of. So that is the activity there. I was answering the question thinking it was the credit card system that we have an ongoing, um, activity with. So I didn't want anyone to leave here, and something comes back now that I have. Just so happened that our clerk is also our accounts payable, uh, and she recognized the information and shared with me what it was. So I will further, uh, provide additional clarity to that. So thank you, Commissioner King, and Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to clarify that it was city-related, so that answer is correct. However, my answer was thinking it was related to our credit card system. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the interruption.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, appreciate that, sir. Any Sergeant O'Tee, do you have anything that you want to say tonight in Palm Beach County Shaft Department, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, and I appreciate you. And our Chief, you know, still here with us tonight. Just want to say to this Commissioner here tonight, and before these residents as well, the thing about a dinner with the finance within this city, and I want to make sure that you understand that you have heard that bribery and different things is taking place within finance within different cities, fraud and other things. This city here, this city here, I make sure that don't happen in this city here. And I remember back in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, and what transpired in this city here. Finance Director was here during that particular time period. And after we began through, after we went through all that with the OG and all that, everything was clarified during that particular time period, and I expressed to the City Manager, I said that if you see anything that you're not pleased with and you're not satisfied with it, do not put your signature on it, do not stamp it at all, because your signature and my signature go on there. And I'm not going to be involved in no fraud at all within this city, because I'm not going to take no residents' money, I'm not going to take no tax bill money at all. He have been doing that, he have been doing a fantastic job. This, this Finance Director, if there's a penny, a dollar missing, he want to know where that penny is at. Don't get me wrong, he want to know where that penny is at. It doesn't balance out at all. And that's the type of Finance Director we have within the City of South Bay. I'm glad that Commissioner Polk is learning about the financial system within the City of South Bay, and we're going to continue to operate that way. If you ever have any question about anything to do with the finance within this city here, speak with the City Manager, speak with the Finance Director here, and they will try to rectify everything within this city here. I'm saying this because I see precisely what take place here. You don't have to worry about no fraud, none of that stuff going on within the City of South Bay. Your money is safe. Your money is very, very safe within the City of South Bay. Listen to our budget, listen to our audit each and every year. Audit is very plain, easy to, to, to read, and very easy to understand. So I just want to say to each and every one of you all, listen to what is being said here, so you'll be able to go out and tell the truth, instead of leading people in the wrong direction in reference to things that taking place in this City of South Bay, because this is your city. You elected us to serve. And I'm going to go back and put it another way, we work for you. We work for you all, and we will continue to be that way as well. But we want to make sure that you understand everything that's take place in this city here. And I, when I hear something about fraud is taking place in this city here, and bribery and all of that there, no. Those are lies that is being told about the City of South Bay. And I'm here to say it over and over again, it's not true. Your money is safe in this city here, you don't have to worry about that's taking place in this city here, none whatsoever. Because I said before, I'm not going to jail, I'm not going to prison for no one. When it come down to this city of money here, I'm here to tell you all, because they're going to come to me, City Manager and the Finance Director, if anything take place like that in this city here. And I'm going to make sure it's not going to happen, not on my watch, none whatsoever. But again, I just want to say thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for being interested in what taking place in this City of South Bay. Continue to work with us, not against us. I'd rather for a person to show their hand, and I pick up a rocket, hit me behind my head, because I don't have no hair, hit me in my head, and move on like nothing ever taken place.